I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the dear symbol of perfect friendship among the United soldiers.
Lord, please bless us all with your love and compassion. Thank you for this community, its leader, and bless us all when making those hard decisions concerning the community. Help heal all those that are hurting and need healing from your hands. Please protect us all from outside forces and keep us all from harm. Thank you for the love and forgivingness of all our shortcomings. Please continue to bless this county and this community. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with public comments and announcements. Do you have any public comments?
Public comments?
See, none. We'll move on to our public hearing.
Oh, we have one.
Uh, public comments where we can discuss, uh, issues like we've...
You can tell, you can come up here and discuss any of the problems that you're having. You get three minutes.
Okay.
If you could just state your name for the director, please.
Eric Rives. So, uh, my name's Eric Rives. Like I said, um, the reason I'm here this morning is to kinda let everybody know kinda the issues that we've been having in the community of Malaga. Um, I know we have a lot of wrongful traffic everywhere in Carlsbad, and, uh, I agree a hundred percent that we need it. Um, I have a couple of businesses in it myself, but, you know, we live in it every day. You kinda see stuff going on. Um, we have a street in Malaga, uh, Duarte Road. Um, we've had a commissioner come out before, um, called the sheriff's department out. Um, me, myself, everyone in the community, tell we're probably blue in the face. Um, seems like we don't get any type of recognition or anything, any changes. Um, and I know it's a big county and I know there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, I've sent, um, some videos over to Mr. Carlson. Uh, I don't know if you got them or not. Hopefully, maybe you can share them with the other people when you got some time. Um, really what we're looking for is some type of maybe, uh, rumble strips, um, more patrolling in the community. Um, you know, there's a lot of people there that have a lot of small children. And, uh, you know, seems like every three, four years when we go through these booms, um, we have to come in and talk, and it's basically the same thing, and it seems like nothing ever gets done. Um, I just, I'm afraid when they say it's gonna get to the point where, you know, me or someone else in the community walks in here and says, "Hey, look, uh, we lost a child," or "We lost this." Um, and at that point, you know, it's too late. And I, I know no one wants to see that, and no one wants to go to bed with that on their shoulders, but it's, it's getting out of control out there. Um, we got vehicles racing down our street. Um, we got vehicles almost slamming into fences, you know. People in the community try not to even get on the road around five o'clock in the afternoon till eight, nine o'clock at night. Same thing vice versa in the mornings, you know. It's just, there's a lot of traffic out there. And, uh, so that's the reason I wanted to come in, just kinda make you guys aware of what's going on. And kind of ask if there's anything that you guys can do to try to, you know, give a little bit of help out there. Um, I know the sheriff's department probably gets tired of hearing, uh, phone calls from the people of the community every afternoon of stuff going on, but, uh, I mean, we'll continue to try and try, and, uh, hopefully they'll see what's going on too, and, uh, maybe they can give us a little bit of support and help out there as well. So, um, I don't know. Um, several counties come out that put out, um, children at play signs. Um, they get hit by semis. Um, stop sign at, uh, McDonald on Duarte Road has been run over. It's not even standing. Uh, someone went and actually stuck it back in the ground, so it'd be standing right now. Um, I mean, I figure some rumble strips in the residential area, more patrol, just whatever we could get would greatly be appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments?
I'm Steve Angel. I have the, uh, same issues out there that live on Coleman Road, and it's a mile south of Eric. And, uh, even yesterday afternoon, we were sitting on the patio out on the porch on the front of the house, and there was a semi, he was doing a minimum, by guess, of sixty-five to seventy miles an hour up Coleman Road. The speed limit out there is thirty miles an hour. This is a daily occurrence. If there's any way that you ladies and gentlemen could put it in your hearts to at least put some speed bumps out there, a minimum of three, because, uh, nobody likes to drag race more than I do. But, that's not the place to drag race in a thirty-mile zone, and that's the same speed limit that a lot of everybody here has in front of their house. And it's not a drag strip in front of your house either, just like it's not in front of mine. We have animals. I cannot keep barn cats to keep the mice away. They get run over all the time. We have animals at our house, and we have grandchildren. And this, like Eric said, the sheriff's department can't stay there all the time. I have talked to the sheriff that has pulled people over, and I said, "How fast was this guy going?" He said seventy-two miles an hour. That, it's ridiculous, so please, if you could, try to help us out, okay? I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other public comment?
I live across the street from Steve. My name is Jackie Miller. Um, I have grandkids too, and there's a lot of people that bring animals out there and just dump them. And we don't have enough officers to come out there and collect all the animals that get dumped. So what we have been doing, my brother and I, and my dad and my mom, all live on a three-acre lot. And when somebody dumps a cat, which is most of the time what they dump, we capture the cat, we get it fixed, we bring it back out there, and we feed him, and we try to take care of him. You can't keep a wild cat in a house. My brother's got four of them. I don't know how he does it, but he's the only person I know that's a cat whisperer. He can get them to come in. Nobody else I know can, and there's a lot of them out there. And every time they graze behind our houses, on either side, all the other wild animals come out. I can't tell you how many times I've stepped out my parents' front door and seen a coyote, or a fox, or a skunk, or something hit in the road. And that gets kinda dangerous with little kids around. They're nosy. They wanna know what all that stuff is, and they go close to that animal, and if that animal's putrid, you know, they could get sick real easy. And it's just really scary, and they don't, they don't pay attention. They go running up the road as fast as they can, the kids in those little box cars, as fast as they can up our road, 'cause it goes kind of uphill a little ways. They have a blast. They don't realize what they're gonna end up doing. I've seen so many accidents happen that way. Unlike Steve, if you guys could find it in your heart to do something to keep them from going so fast down that road, we'd greatly appreciate it, and thanks for your time, and thanks for all y'all's help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearing. O twenty-three, one twenty-six. Ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of Eddy County Industrial Revenue Bond, pronto midstream project, series twenty-twenty-three, and aggregate principal amount not to exceed five hundred million in associated documents. I just need a motion to open the public hearing, please.
Do I have a motion? Do you have a motion and second? Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Okay.
We will start with staff comments. Um, just to preface this, um, on October third, um, the commission did approve Resolution R twenty-three, one oh two, and that was just for the intent, um, to issue the IRB. This is now the next step in the process.
Okay. Do we have any staff comments? Okay, doesn't look like we do. Let's move on to public comments. Any public comments? Doesn't look like we have any public comments. Let's move on to the county attorney comments.
I don't guess I have any comments. We also have available, if the commission has any questions, the attorneys that were involved. We told them they could appear by calling in. We would call them if there were any questions that were needing to be asked and answered.
Okay. I don't, is there any con, uh, questions for the attorney? Okay, let's move on. Commission comments.
Nothing's changed since the third, right?
Let's go entertain a motion and a second from the board to, to approve. Ordinance zero, uh, zero twenty-three, one twenty-six and related documents. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance zero dash two-three dash one-two-six, I guess, and related documents, right?
Which is the order authorizing the issuance and sale of the Eddy County Industrial Revenue Bond, pronto midstream, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed five hundred million dollars and the associated documents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
Have a second. Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Moving to the trailing agenda.
Mr. Chairman, just really quick before we move into the trailing agenda, um, I do need to pull item number nine from the trailing agenda. We could just notate that. Moving on to item one, we have commission meeting minutes for October third, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have any questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve commission meeting minutes for October third, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Epstein.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Epstein.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commission meeting minutes for October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. Comments or amendments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Epstein.
Expense approval report for October twenty-twenty-three. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Purchase card approval report for September twenty-twenty-three. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve purchase card approval report for September twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Next item, we have treasury report for September twenty-twenty-three. Uh, this was distributed to all the commissioners, so it's just FYI only. We'll move into the revenue report for September twenty-twenty-three. Uh, before we do, as she comes up, I'd like to introduce our new finance director, Freddie County. Her name is Brianna Shields, so she is brave enough to, um, dive right in and start reporting on our financials.
One, one weekend. So bear with me. Um, first up is the September twenty-twenty-three revenue report. Um, for the month of September, revenues came in for gross receipts at five point one million. Uh, quarter to date sixteen million, about a twenty-four percent increase over the prior year of Q1. Um, oil and gas receipts for the month of September came in at five point eight million. Uh, quarter to date eighteen point eight million, um, which was thirty-six percent decrease over Q1 prior year, um, mostly driven by, um, oil prices. Um, oh, I was meant to distribute this around, do you guys? I hope they have one on copies. Okay. I'll speak about the September distribution of oil and gas. Go ahead and do that. Um, the September distribution was based on June business. Um, it came in at twenty-one point three million barrels at sixty-eight dollars, uh, price per barrel. Currently, as of today, the price per barrel is at seventy-nine dollars. Uh, looking forward, I, we should see a little bit of an increase in the distribution in the next coming months just because of the price increase over the past, um, couple of months, since June. Um, gas is June business, we came in at one hundred and thirty-three million MCFs at two dollars and fifty-three cents per, um, MCF. Uh, price today was three dollars and twelve cents. Um, so again, we had, had some price appreciations, and we should see some increases in the next coming months. Um, I guess that should be good for the revenue report.
Do I have any questions?
No, I just wanna say welcome.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Uh, great job for your first meeting, and yeah, we look forward to working with you.
John, have any questions? Questions?
Questionnaire.
We're all glad to have you here.
I appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Next, we have budget versus actual, September revenue and expenses.
Um, budgeted revenue came in for the year as two hundred and fifty-eight million. Actual revenue through September, uh, quarter end, came in at one forty-eight million. Um, percent collected around fifty-eight percent. Uh, revenue less transfers is closer to thirty-four percent collected, um, through quarter end. Budget expenses came in at two hundred and eighty-four million. Actual expenses at one twenty-two million. Uh, percent spent or used came in at forty-three percent. Expenses less those transfers came at fifteen percent through the quarter. Um, going to some of the bigger funds. The general fund revenue is at thirty-two percent collected. Uh, general fund expenses are at eighteen percent without transfers, so eighteen percent spent without transfers. Um, the road fund is at ninety-five percent revenue collected. Um, road fund expenses only at thirteen percent spend without the transfers and stuff.
Questions? 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 Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve budget versus actual, September revenue and expenses.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, first quarter lodgers tax report.
Okay, we came into the fiscal year with a hundred and forty thousand dollar cash balance. Um, we collected eighteen K over the Q1. Thirty-two thousand was spent between, um, POG Fest and the October, or the Chamber billboards. Um, that leaves our ending balance at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, we do have about fifty-five thousand in committed, but not spent yet, so the balance after those would be seventy-one thousand.
Questions? Question? I have a question. We said we have a certain amount committed. How long do they have to use that?
That would be a Steve McCroskey question.
Commissioners, uh, we recently talked with the lodgers tax board about that very issue, and one of the things that they decided on the lodgers tax board was that we probably ought to put a limit on that time period and tell them, "You've got sixty days to get the information back to us so that we can give you the reimbursement on that." That being said, some of these that are encumbered, we didn't roll that out to them because it wasn't something they were aware of when they made application. So, we're working with them to get this in as quickly as possible, uh, and, and get these reimbursements paid for. We are starting that from the November meeting forward.
And how long is that gonna be? I mean, obviously, if you got, if they come early and they're at an event three months down the road, and we approve that, that's fine, but I don't wanna encumber something and the event never happens. You know, I wanna...
Yes, no, I understand.
That money is to be used to promote the community, and I want it to be used to promote the community, not committed to somebody for some possible future event.
And, and that was one thing that we had spoke with the lodgers tax board about as well, was should we have a time period set on this for the application, where they don't apply in February for something they're putting on in September or October? The lodgers tax board didn't really want to, to set that limit on stuff if you guys want it, you know. But that, that, to me, that presents kind of a, an issue as well with us tracking the money and stuff, but we are making sure that if, if they're going to do the event, they have sixty days after the event to submit the invoices to us. If they don't submit invoices, then...
Yeah, after sixty days from the event.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. We just need to know what events and when they're scheduled to happen.
Correct.
So that if we have money committed, we know that that event's on track.
Yes, sir. We keep track of that very closely. Tanya's got a list in the office of, of everything, when it's happening and when their money and, or their invoices are due back to us.
And there was a distribution in October after this period of time, so some of that fifty-five K has already been paid out in October.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the lodgers tax?
Do I have a motion?
All motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next, we have capstone project overview for CPM, Melissa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. So I come to you this morning just to give you a quick overview of what I'm doing. I have over five hundred hours invested with the Edge program for all my certifications, and I'm on the final, the final tour, which is Capstone Project. Capstone Project is a project that you have to choose, present to your county, and it has to be implementable if they so choose to do that. So, instead of giving you the whole presentation, 'cause I'm still working on it, um, we chose to just give you a quick overview. I asked County Manager to send you out the official paper that was just turned in to the Edge program. Along with that, has to be a presentation with PowerPoint. I know you guys are very busy. So, as soon as I get that finished, County Manager, I'll review it with her to get her approval to move on with that and present it to the Edge program on December the fifth. I chose, uh, employee clinic, medical clinic for employees and their families. And the reason that I chose that for my Capstone project is I came to Eddy County for the medical field fifteen years, ran a clinic, and listened to different departments, not just my department, but other departments. There is a huge need for our employees and their families when it comes to medical, because we worry about our infrastructure, but nobody looked at our medical. You see, our groceries aren't on the, on the shelves anymore. You can't even buy a pillow at Walmart. It's the same way with medical. So I've heard from different employees that they've had to wait a week or two for their child, just for a common cold, to get back into the schools. Um, your urinary tract infection ends up in the ER. So, these are things that drive our premiums through the roof, is those high ER visits. Because when you go to the ER, you're not just going for an antibiotic. They're gonna do a twenty thousand dollar workup and then give you the antibiotic and tell you you have urinary tract infection, right? So this is how quick our premiums drive, because they look at the overall cost. So, uh, I wrote the paper. I hope that you all read it. I know we're still pretty far out in the future planning. I've had talks with the previous county manager on some of my plans, what I was looking at. Uh, I hope that when we get to that point of building, a new building, we can incorporate a clinic. Uh, I would love to be a liaison for it when it comes in, just because I do have the experience in that field. And I'm still looking at, uh, points of startup costs. You know, like your exam badge, your stethoscopes, what it's gonna cost for the physician, what it's gonna cost for their DVA number to write prescriptions, and s- stuff of that magnitude is still, uh, being compiled. I have to have over a hundred hours invested in the Capstone project before I present, uh, my presentation on December fifth. So, I hope that you guys really take a hard look at this paper. It's, it's really, really important to our employees, for the future of Eddy County and the health of our employees. So with that, I thank you. I just encourage you to read the paper.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And this was just FYI only. Um, that information was distributed to via email. So if you have any other questions, you can either reach out to Melissa or myself. Next, we move into proclamation in support of New Mexico Nurse Practitioner Council celebrating National Nurse Practitioner Week, which is November twelfth through the eighteenth of twenty-twenty-three, and the valuable contributions nurse practitioners make every day serving the citizens of New Mexico. So, uh, Ryan Putman had reached out to me. He's a nurse prac in Chavez County, um, and he is our Region Four representative for the New Mexico Nurse Practitioner Council. Um, and he had just asked, you know, if, um, we, as Eddy County and U.S. Commissioner, would consider approval of a proclamation to support nurse practitioners and all that they do. So, um, that is what we brought forward to you guys, and we were just asking for your consideration for approval.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to.
Good. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, uh, set a special, uh, set, set a special commission meeting to open and close canvas for the regular local election held today, November seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So, um, by statute, we are required for you guys to certify the canvas no sooner than six days and no later than thirteen days after the election today. So, if we can do it sometime next week, whatever days you guys have available, it would be...
And would anybody be available on Monday, Monday morning?
I think I could, yeah, I'll be available Monday.
I can do Monday.
Are you available Monday?
I think, yes.
So we have three.
Eddie, would you guys like to do it at eight-thirty or a different time? Monday at eight-thirty?
Monday, yeah.
Monday the thirteenth at eight-thirty? If I could just get a motion?
And you'll send out a notice?
Yes. I just need a motion for that, please.
Do I have a motion?
The motion for a special canvas meeting to open and close canvas for the regular local election held today.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine was removed, so we'll move to item number ten, which is fund utilization for appropriation twenty-three Z H five-zero-four-eight dash twenty-five, which is one million fifty-dollar grant for law enforcement recruitment distribution. Sheriff Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is, uh, some money from the state that they've, they've thrown towards law enforcement. They did it last year, um, and I, I opted not to put in for any of it last year because we misunderstood, well, we didn't misunderstand. We, we were down, uh, approximately seventeen positions or something like that, we, that were unfilled. And so I saw no reason to take any money to add more positions if we couldn't fill what we had. Um, later on, we found out that, uh, they, they changed their mind and said, "Oh, we got this out early, so if y'all wanna use this for, uh, retention bonuses and stuff like that, y'all can do that too." So I immediately got ahold of the Secretary of DPS and said, "Hey dude, y'all didn't say this initially." Um, I would've put in for this money for my, my agency if I'd have known. Well, it was too late then. I said, "Well, that's, that's typical of how our, you know..." And, and the, the Secretary of DPS is a good friend of mine. He tried to help me, uh, but he couldn't. But that's typical of how our government in Santa Fe works. So, anyway, this year, when the, when the, when it came out, uh, I said, "I'm putting in for this." And, uh, interestingly enough, we are full right now. We, we have all our positions filled. What we looked at... What we looked at with this, it's a million dollars. It is for salary and benefits, uh, to hire more deputies, which, listening to a couple of the comments this morning, obviously, we need more deputies. Because I, I need to add people to my, uh, traffic division, because they're running, playing whack-a-mole out there from place to place where we have problems. And with a little over four thousand square miles to cover it, 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 it's, it's daunting, it's challenging. So what we looked at was, and this, this thing works out to where it is to fully fund, a hundred percent fund the first year. It's like all these grants, the second year it drops to, to fifty percent, the third year it drops to, uh, twenty-five percent. So what I would look, what, looking at it, we, we fleshed it out and we worked with Roberta on it. Um, we're looking at four positions is what we could add to our complement. Um, which would add, be able to add a person to every shift on patrol or potentially add some more to, uh, traffic division. Or however we, we see the, the need to, to fill. Um, e- either way, it's, uh, right now, it's free money. We would have to evaluate how it is, and by the way, we have certified people waiting for those positions. It's great. Great problem to have, right? Um, but we, our recruiter already has people ready to hire immediately if, if y'all approve this. So a little motivation there for you. I've, I've spoken with, uh, with Chairman Carlson about this, and I've spoken with Roberta about it. This is a concept I had before, is we add positions now, yes, we're flush, we have money, we, we're able to do this. This is free money too, by the way. What happens later on if we don't have this money? Or we, we don't have the need anymore? We sh- we shrink through attrition if, if that happens. Uh, cause people come and go, that, that, that's the nature of the business everywhere. So if we decide that these positions aren't needed in the future, as people retire, as they leave, as they do whatever, we just decide not to fill those positions. And we stay, we keep our budget and we stay fiscally sound and fiscally responsible. So again, it is free money, but it dries up after a while, and we have to decide whether we wanna keep these positions on. And we'll, we'll evaluate that, and I'll work with Roberta to bring, uh, information to you as to whether we need to keep these or not. And that'll happen during the budget process is what I would suggest. So anyway, that's what I'm bringing to you. Um, I think it's a good deal. We were hoping when we put in for this money for ten new positions, but we didn't get enough money for that. So we got, we got enough for four, for salary and benefits.
Okay, questions? Questions, questions? Commissioner Henry?
Yes, uh, you had mentioned some traffic control in some of these problem areas, which I'm very interested in seeing happen in a lot of people in this room as well. Just to be point blank, would speed bumps be helpful to you to do that?
Speed bumps are not great. Um, speed humps might be.
All right, let's call them.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I've shown Jason, um, I've told him that there's some in, in Lincoln County, uh, in the, the little town of Lincoln, and they're big speed humps. Uh, the, the speed bumps, they, they, they are just devastating to people pulling trailers and, uh, and, and to our, the, the, the fire apparatus. They're really difficult for them to, to deal with. The speed humps, on the other hand, and Jason's probably gonna kill me for saying this, um, but I, I like those a lot better, a lot better. And I, and I think they can be useful.
I agree, cause you guys can't be there everywhere. And I guess I don't whole lot understand the difference between speed humps and speed bumps.
The humps are a lot longer.
Well, I agree, you kinda like the ones, some places around Carlsbad, several places around Carlsbad, yeah.
Plum Lane, I don't know if you guys are familiar, is, I must admit that's like a hump, you know? And there's several there, and it does slow down traffic.
And you cross it with semis and agricultural trailers and tandem axles don't hang up on it, so.
Okay, any other?
Point of contention handled.
Jason's mad at me right now.
I, I, I agree with the sheriff. Uh, attrition, I think will take care of, as, as if the boom was to go down and we didn't have those, the need for those additional deputies. Attrition would take care of that problem for us. I agree with you. I also agree the fact that, that we need to give him extra deputies so that he can have a larger traffic department. Uh, I, as we've talked about in, in Malaga, I mean, you've been out there time and time again. Uh, you just keep writing tickets and it's good for a day, but once they learn that the, that there's no law enforcement out there, they're back to the same old problem that we, that we're experiencing. Uh, Eric and his dad have called me and called me and called me, and I've talked to you, and you've sent them out there all you can. But, you know, it's like you said, four, how, how many square miles of?
Over four, over four thousand.
Four thousand miles of road that we have to patrol.
Oh, the roads are even more than that.
Yeah.
And, and I'll tell you this, uh, yeah, Malaga, I get, there's folks out there that get ahold of me directly, and I send folks out there. And I send them out and they write, they write tickets that next morning.
Yeah.
But state police didn't come in to save us. State police is, they, they, they're down a lot. They don't have the folks to send to us. So that's why I have a traffic division. And that's, I know, what, what sheriff wants their deputies out writing their voters' tickets? I mean, so I mean, let's, let's just be honest about this whole thing. But it, it has to happen here. We, we're not, we can't rely on state police to say, we're, we're working fatal crashes now, which is unheard of. Um, all of our traffic folks are, uh, crash reconstructionists. Because we just can't rely, uh, God bless state police, love them, they're a lot, a lot of friends there. Um, I'm good friends with the chief and the Secretary of DPS, but they just don't have the people. And there are other counties who are not willing to step up, they're not willing to, to do the work out on highways. So they're, they're needed more there than they are here, because we're willing to do it, you know?
That brings, I do have a question. Were, will you dedicate these positions to traffic or do you have other ideas?
It, it's gonna be however we see that we need it. And if we put them on the, the shifts, if we put them, cause we have four shifts, we have a day shift and a night shift, two of, two of each. If we put them on the shifts where they are uniform patrol, they can augment the, the, the traffic division. Plus the, the sergeant, the lieutenant have the leeway to say, okay, I'm gonna, the traffic division's over here, but the sheriff called me with a hotspot over here, I'm gonna send a couple of people over here. So we're just gonna evaluate how we see best. Traffic is an expensive division, like I said, they're all reconstructionists, that's an expensive class to send people to. And frankly, it's, it's a brutal, it's a lot of math and a lot of physics. So we may not put them specifically in traffic, but they will, traffic will benefit from it.
I, I, I just think that it's important, we have a premier, we have a premier, uh, law enforcement department here, and we've got to keep maintaining that. And resources is key, is a major key to, to keeping us at that level that we wanna be at, because we have a great county, we have a great sheriff, we have a great, uh, department. And we wanna maintain that, but we've gotta give them the resources and support that to do it. Because I know that, that we as a commission wanna be responsive to the constituents that elected us. And the sheriff, he wants to be just as responsive to the community. And we gotta, and to do that, he has to have the resources to do it. And so I'm all for it.
I agree.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on writing the tickets. It seems to me that if you write enough tickets, you're putting some CDL licenses in jeopardy through quarters. So I would think the more you could write, I mean, I think there would get to be a point, some of these guys would be looking over your shoulder and where they go.
Well, there's, there's several of the, the companies, the in- industry companies out there that have contacted us and said, hey, if it's our people screwing up, we wanna know directly from you. And they'll fire them. I mean, or they'll sanction them, they'll do something. So we, we communicate with the companies, and we say, hey, yeah, your guy was driving recklessly, um, what are you gonna do about it? And they, they, they clean up after themselves, they can't afford the insurance if they don't. And they can't afford the bad PR if they don't.
They can't find drivers either, so.
That, that's true.
One of the things that I think that, that my people out in Malaga have been telling me, that it's a lot of the, of the, uh, welders.
Yeah.
Type, uh, that are independent contractors. And so.
Yeah, those are, those are our biggest offenders. It goes welders, welding rigs, and then water haulers. Uh, but the welding rigs are by far our biggest offenders in the, the crazy driving category.
Well, and I, I'm familiar with the area, but, um, if we do something like speed humps, whatever, will they be able to like go around that?
That's a problem that you have with that, is there has to be something to keep them from going around that. Because then you start, you, and that's a problem that we, we dealt with at Happy Valley.
Right.
Those were really rough ones, and, uh, people would just go around them and cause a bigger problem, because now they're driving outside the traffic lane. So we've struggled.
Can we get a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve the fund utilization for appropriation number twenty-three dash Z H five zero four eight dash twenty-five.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, we'll have them hired within a month.
Okay.
Guarantee it.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have City of Artesia Industrial Park Freeman Road Project Budget Adjustment, Jason?
Jason. Mister Chairman, Commissioners. Um, this request this morning, uh, City of Artesia had communicated with us back, honestly, it's been a year or so ago when they were first starting to plan and design, um, their industrial improvements. And, um, they asked if we would like to participate on our piece of road that they were doing there, which is about, oh, quarter of a mile right there on Freeman Road. Um, that goes up to, uh, Mill, I think is what it is. But anyway, we agreed, um, that we'd like to participate with them, and City of Artesia's always been real good about partnering and participating with us on our, um, projects. And, and back when they originally asked, we put it in the budget and it was approved. And by the time they got it designed and bid and constructed, um, we'd gone through a fiscal year and we didn't include it in the budget again. So, um, we do have a final price on that, and we're asking today that if we can continue and go ahead and reimburse the City of Artesia our portion for the road that they've constructed on Freeman.
Do I have a motion to approve this? Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Uh, Henry?
I'm staying.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Next, we have. Next, we have Budget Adjustment at Eddie County Capital Projects Conceptual Designs and Planning, Jason and Trent.
So, good morning, um. We have been planning this, this has been something that's been a long time coming. Um, that Roberta has spearheaded and, and brought all of us in to need to be involved with Trent and myself. Um, kinda trying to lead the charge on this thing. Um, we've, we've previously done the planning and the programming for these facilities and buildings that we're wanting to build. Um, this is the next step. We have, we have the information of what we think we need. Now, this is the step to actually have them produce us a conceptual drawing that we can roll out and bring to the commission and bring to Roberta to put together a good plan of the how much and how long. And to actually be able to roll out and say, okay, here's what we need to meet Eddie County's needs, with a detention center, with a courthouse, with a new admin building. We're gonna do all these concurrently and hopefully bring them to you about the same time. Because that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to put together the plan of how to do these all at once. Not, not necessarily all at once, but what is the timeline between the individual projects? Um, sorry.
No, I just, go see, any questions?
No, I don't have questions, I'm just, I'm ready.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Questions, questions, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Have a second, call for the vote.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
I'd like Commissioners.
Thank you, we're very excited.
You don't have to talk so long.
Next, we have sand boost installation, Mr. Doosson.
Morning, Chairman Commissioners. So this sand boost is a part that goes on our fire trucks. It, um, makes it more usable for lower manpower. The driver can push a button when they get out, they can pull a hose, at the end of the hose, they can push a button that then charges the hose and the, the truck controls some things for them. We initially planned on doing this through our budget of vehicle maintenance, these are, end up being capital items, so we do a budget adjustment. As part of this project, they gave us a price, it was double this price, we said, no, that's too expensive. They said, if you guys will install these and be a demo for us, we get them at half price. So, um, and this would be for four fire trucks, our four first, first out staffed engines. And we've already gone through the soul source letter and everything, so if this is approved, we're ready to appeal.
I like half price, questions? Questions, questions, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the sand boost installation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Request to overhire Division Chief of Training, Health and Safety, Chief Mack.
Morning, Mister Chairman Commissioners. So, uh, Chief Burks is going to be retiring. Looks like February first is gonna be his last day, maybe the thirty-first somewhere in there. So we're asking for permission to overhire his position, so that way we can get somebody in there and take his thirty-plus years of college and credit and claim it to that person. Help that division continue its proceedings, so.
Questions? 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 Okay, I have one question, how long will this be, the overhire be for?
How long will be?
He'll, he'll leave in February.
Yeah, so we're.
Planning on putting person to that position?
We're gonna get it posted today, we've already talked to Rob Sanz.
And that usually takes how long? So would it be December?
A week or two, yeah, by December is our.
Okay, so we'll basically have two months of overhire.
Okay. Which we were worried we were only gonna get eight months, so.
Yeah. So do I get the mo- uh, a motion?
I'll make the motion to.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we have approved extension of the Arbor Estates Preliminary Plats, Mr. McCroskey.
Mister Chairman Commissioners. Uh, bring this before you, uh, the Arbor Estates subdivision was approved in October nineteen twenty twenty-one. Uh, per the ordinance, preliminary plat expires two years after approval. Uh, Ms. Lord just came to you in September, give or take, with, uh, the request of what she needed to do to extend this plat. As they have not gotten the subdivision completely ready to go under the preliminary plat. Uh, I informed her that she needed to send a letter of request to myself, and then I had to bring that before you all, commission for approval of the extension. She is asking for a twelve-month extension. She cited, uh, Family Dynamics and Carl Jalen, who says the reasoning for needing the extension. She's fully, uh, she seems fully capable of getting the subdivision finished within the twelve months that she's asked for on this extension. And, and it is to ask for recognition that we allow her the extension if, uh, we go with this.
Questions?
Questions? No, I, I, I totally support it, because, I mean, A, we need some, uh, we need more houses in, in that area, and, uh, she's been working hard.
Questions?
I answered my question.
Questions? What percent do you think they're completed so far?
Honestly, I'm sure that is not something I asked them, but I would assume Mr. Henry may know more about it than I do. I would say probably eighty percent.
Eighty percent?
Would be my assumption.
Is that about right?
I would guess they've been, she's been working hard on it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to go through the extension for Arbor Estates Preliminary Plat.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Have a motion and second call for the vote?
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Thank you. Next we have our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Okay, do we have any items that you'd like to discuss or pull? Any items to discuss? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the resolution consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and second call for the vote?
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Questions, just really quick, because I need all five of your signatures on this particular resolution. I'm going to pass these around for signatures. If you don't mind signing both of those.
Okay.
Would you like me to move on to travel or give you guys a minute to sign?
Travel consent agenda. Do we have any questions on travel consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve? I'm losing. Have a motion, have a second?
Bowen's second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second call for the vote.
Please, Henry? Carlson? Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have any emergency business this morning. I do have a short legislative update for you. We just received a short update from Matt Thompson, who we consult with for Cambridge Consulting. He just wanted to let us know that the interim committees are wrapping up. At each of the committee's final meetings, they consider the legislation based on interim hearings. And Cambridge will be monitoring those meetings for us and will be giving us updates if necessary at most. As well as, I'm sure most of you know, but there have been five legislators that have announced that they will not seek reelection or they announced their retirement. Those are Gerald Ortiz, District Twelve out of Albuquerque. Bill Tellman, District Eighteen of Albuquerque, Cliff Purtle, District Thirty-two out of Roswell. Of course, Senator Kernan, District Forty-two, which that position has already been reappointed for. And then Stuart Engel, District Twenty-seven out of Portalis. So is there any other legislative comments or announcements? Next we'll move into elected official department comments and announcements.
Oh, no, no, you first.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. How are you this morning? I haven't been up here for a while, so I kind of wanted to give you a little update. We've been a little busy in the HR department. The first thing I'd like to tell you is we are doing our shots, our flu shots, that we started yesterday. They'll be upstairs this afternoon from eleven to one in the training room for the shots here. They'll be at Public Works tomorrow. They were in Artesia yesterday doing the substation and doing the detention centers. Excuse me, yesterday and this morning. So our shots are out there. If you don't, if he doesn't have the shots that you're looking for, because he's got the flu and the COVID shots, if you're looking for the other immunizations, talk with him and you can go to to advanced medication and you can get your shots there for us. I wanted to let you know that we participated in the Fall Festival last week downtown. We had the fire truck down there, fire rescue cane. We had Public Works and they had a couple of the dozers and stuff there. We also had detention. They were there. HR was there, of course. And we gave out candy and stuff. And we just wanted the community to see Eddie County and be a part of Eddie County. There was lots and lots and lots and lots of kids there. I think it was a success and we were on the radio why they were doing that thing. The other thing I wanted to let you know, we have gone to a new applicant tracking system. We work with Civic Plus HR. They have vacated the platform. And so we had to go to a new company and so we are going with their company. We went live yesterday. We lived this week yesterday. It's gone well. We've already had nineteen people apply. So that's good. It's gonna give us updated technology. We used to couldn't text the applicants, you know, when they had applied, you know, they would get an email and stuff. But we can have more connection with them. People look at their texts more than they do the email. So it's gonna move us up a little bit. We can get some reports. We couldn't get that out of Civic Plus. We had to do it manually. So we're excited about that. We're not gonna be spending so much time counting ticks. You know, we'll have some reports and some information that we can give you. The other thing that we're working on is we've been in contact with the Department of Labor. And they have a new program called the New Mexico Pre-Aprenticeship Program. And it's for people's ages sixteen to twenty-four. They pay, the Department of Labor pays for four hundred hours. They do not come on our payroll. They pay for the work comp. They take care of all of that. And it's a, it's a way for them to get people out there into the community and to learn about jobs that we have out there. Give them a chance to participate. We may not be able to hire them, you know, because it is a sixteen to twenty-four. They do have to follow our hiring practices that we do and go through. But maybe when they get eighteen or nineteen, you know, oh, you know, I worked there and I liked that and, well, that was interesting. Or I may wanna pursue like the college did yesterday, you know, the education stuff. Things that they can learn, introduce them to what work is and that concept, because we kind of fall short there. I've been talking with Roberta. I've talked and sent out an email to our department heads and elected officials. And I've heard from some and they're interested in it, you know? And it's a chance for us to teach and kind of train them and maybe have future applicants, employees down the road. With that, and I've been working with Roberta, we do have tipped positions that we have frozen. We froze them many years ago. And we'll be talking about that and unfreeze those so that we can use those allocations for those positions. But we don't have to put money into it because the Department of Labor is going to pay for them. They pay for all of them. So I just wanted to let you know that we're looking at that and gonna get that started. I'll be coming back to you to unfreeze those temporary positions that we have sitting there so that we can put people in them and we'll work on the logistics of all of that when we come back to you. That's it for now. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're tough.
Good morning again. I'm bringing to you the quarterly highlights from Q one, some financial information. There's a lot on the page, but I'll just kind of start with the Southeast Lake project. Prior to this fiscal year, we had spent twenty-one million. Through Q one, we spent two point seven million on the project. Total project spent to date is twenty-four million. And with encumbrances, we're up to about twenty-five million. We do currently have thirty-two active grants, close to forty-two million outstanding. It's really kind of the highlights I wanted to touch on. If you guys have any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna remind everybody that today is election day. Hasn't been too great a turnout for early voting and absentee. In Artesia, three hundred and sixty people voted early. Carlson's back, fourteen hundred and seventeen. So we're hoping that everybody waited till election day, which we did have people show up yesterday wanting to vote because they had something going on today. And that's the only day that we're not voting is the day before the election. So anyway, out of thirty-four thousand registered voters, that's it. Total of twenty-one eighty-nine so far, I mean, as of the end of Saturday.
Wow. You know, I wish on election times they would put when the election day is. I think people don't realize that.
Well, I mean, we tried to post everywhere. One of the biggest complaints that we got over this election is we didn't have candidate information. And I tried to explain to the people that it's a little money. We're the filing office. We're the ones that, you know, were not responsible to hand out candidate information.
That's up to the candidates.
But they said they don't get the newspaper.
Yeah, you think that if I want to be elected, I'd do that.
There's not anything that we can do as far as that goes, but anyway.
You don't have candidate information. I'm having them come here and watch.
Try to tell them that too. As soon as they said, hey, go to YouTube, the candidate, the first candidate was on there. I don't have the internet. I don't have, I don't know. We tried.
He doesn't have the internet.
Oh, well.
We tried.
You need to get it.
Go to the library.
I just wanted to bring to your attention the email that was sent out on the eighteenth of October with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. There is finally some light at the end of the tunnel. This is a project that's been in works for a while now. But it looks like it, with the extension of the amount of time that we put it out there for, the comments and public comments changes, anything that we might see that needed to be changed. Diva should approve it, fingers crossed. And the King Industries will be sending it back out probably by end of week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You going?
You going?
Of course.
I won't be last.
Fine.
Hey, let's go together.
No. No. You slapped my hand earlier. Good morning again. Obviously, like we were talking about, traffic enforcement, traffic enforcement. We, just to assure everybody, we are doing more than most and we're gonna continue to. It's just one of those things. Last week, we had got to participate in a joint executive board meeting with New Mexico Counties and Municipal League. And in your packet and you approved to support the New Mexico Counties legislative priorities. Municipal League, they supported all of our priorities. We agreed to support all of theirs. We have one caveat that we need more information on before we agree to support it. But it was a great meeting. We're, it's always good for us to work together with our municipal partners. And Municipal League's doing a lot of good things. They're still recovering after Bill Fullgenetti's death. I mean, that was a big blow to them, but A.J. Forte is doing a great job. He and Joyce Farson, our executive director, are working very closely together. So that was a really good thing. Our canines have hit the ground running, literally. The first night working, they took meth and fentanyl off the streets. And they have, almost every night they work, they are pulling dope off the streets. We took them to Artesia Junior High. We were invited to go there by Debbie Doss. And we, Matt and I went and we sat the whole day. We were in every one of her classes, talking about law enforcement and giving these kids. They let them ask questions. I, it was shocking, some of the junior high's kids, how, not shocking, it was impressive. Some of the thoughtful questions they had. So it was pretty amazing. But we brought the dogs in and that was, of course, the highlight of the whole thing. They don't wanna see an old man, old bald man up there. They wanna see dogs doing all kinds of cool stuff. And we even did a bike demonstration. They loved that. So it was really good. Artesia General, we went and did a presentation. Lieutenant Kane Wyatt went up and did furthering our Operation Hard Target. He went and did training with Artesia General. We're pushing that out there to everybody we can. It's available. Operation Hard Target, which is our active shooter training. And we're also working on bringing the other, the child trafficking component under that as soon as we get fully trained on that. Yesterday, we had an event at El Jimador. We had a breakfast with the sheriff. We invited community members to come out and visit. And we, the El Jimador graciously provided free food for everybody. I'd like to see more people come out. But we did have, we did have some good discourse and visitation with some, you know, members of the community. And got to have some insight into what they're looking for from us. And again, we are fully staffed right now. Well, not anymore. They'll just give you more positions. But we will have them filled. One of them is already, we have one waiting for one of the positions right now. And then the other three should be filled up by Deputy Orlando Moreno is our recruiting guy. And he is doing an amazing job. As a matter of fact, he'll be getting the award for Cade Manstrom from Ricky Garcia. We nominated him for that award because of all the hard work he's done. If you can remember back, we were nineteen down at one point. That went long ago. We're fully staffed now and we're fixing to hire more. So I'm very proud of that. I'm proud of my people. It's not me. It's a team effort. I'm just the guy who gets up here and talks to y'all. There's people back there. I think Amy and Matt are back there. They're, they do a lot of the heavy lifting. And they make, all they do is make me look good, which is kind of difficult. So. I guess he's up here with us.
Maybe you can control him.
Good luck.
We're going off. I didn't wanna do this, but, you know, we've had our comments and you had your discussion earlier. I know the direction that we go in and Eric came in today. We have been out in Malaga. Commissioner and I went out. We've been out several times. I know there's kind of a, it's a fossil right now. It's a mess down there right now with the NMDOT project. And we have had some discussions with them about diverting traffic through the village of Malaga. And we're probably gonna end up trying to block off their side streets and force them down Holy Road. At least until contracted that's on that can at some point get that intersection done. And I agree, it's a mess. And I've talked to their project manager. I've talked to district engineer. And they're working slowly but surely. They're working towards means to an end. But I know it's hard on, you know, any of these projects we do, come across wrong things. As far as our county-specific concerns that we have with speed, the sheriff does a great job, but like he said, he's got more roads and he's got deputies. And that's not any, maybe to point on him, they do a great job. And when they get a concern and me and him talk, it's, they're out there the next day. And they write tickets and they swarm down. But like the board said, it's a one ticket. As soon as they're gone, they're back to speeding. And that's. We are a victim of our own success right now. We are a victim of our own success. We've gone out and with the board's direction and the plan that we brought before you four years ago to start fixing and maintenanceing roads, we've accomplished that and exceeded past that. Even with the Coleman Road, we fixed that road less than six months ago. And now we have the concerns that they're looking on it. Sorry. If you really wanna know what slows people down is potholes. We did not have the Rios family in here complaining about Dorte Road when it had potholes all down the middle of it. And I'm pretty sure his dad was in here complaining at one point about when we were gonna fix Dorte and now we have. And it's, it's, this is throughout the county, it's not on just Dorte, it's not on just Coleman, it's everywhere. It's on, you need the West Loop, it's gonna happen on the East Loop as soon as we open it up. It's on Orchard right now, we've already started kind of hearing whispers about that. At some point, we have to understand, and, and this is, you know, I don't know if this is the right point to make, whether or not the county we were two years ago, where we're a single lane farming community. And that's just something we're trying to adapt to as we go and I don't know the speed bumps or speed humps, whichever width you wanna talk about, are the solution within the county. What we've seen with these things is they create more of a hazard than they do a solution. People dodge them, people go around them. And then it looks like thunder don't out there as we're putting stakes and bricks and cones so they don't dodge them, which creates even more of hazard. Um, we're looking at alternative solutions, we're looking at rumble strips, we're looking at the little bumps that go on the road. But the other thing we're seeing is when they hit these bumps, they speed up and they knock the bolts out. They're also a maintenance nightmare. And I'm not against doing them, but that, and, and I guess I say this, I'm up here telling you why we're hesitant. I understand we need to do something, but what that something is, is questionable, that does not put the county in more of a at-risk liable situation um, than we currently already are. And sheriffs are, we have increased accidents on all of our roads, we've gone out and fixed even ones we haven't. I, I've set out and watched them for time on Twin Wells, we just fixed Twin Wells and I watched a truck the other day doing ninety miles an hour past one that was doing seventy over a cattle bar. At some point, we can't fix stupid. And, and it's just a sad truth though, we can't fix stupid. We do what we can, but there is not an engineering factor, you could put them of nature or stupid people. We do the best we can and we keep going. We are looking, we are trying to find solutions to alter this, especially in our residential areas. But it's, it's, it's difficult, we are in a catch-22 in a very difficult situation. Because if we have one, two, or three that call and complain and wanna come in here and discuss, you know, the concerns of speeders, as soon as we go do that, we have five call behind the scenes that are mad that we did something. So, it's, it's kind of a damned if we do, damned if we don't. And, and it's, it puts us in a very difficult situation all the way around. But, uh, and that's why I wanted to come up here and say, we are trying, we're not turning a deaf ear to it. But there's just really not a right answer to this deal. So, we'll keep trying, we'll keep talking accordingly, but understanding the, the pull of where we're at, so. Hey, road projects are going great, we're gonna be done with the Southeast Loop by the end of the year, so.
And that's another thing with the Southeast Loop, uh, not Southeast Loop, the, the one that comes out from my office, the West Loop. Um, if, if y'all talk to anybody that has any influence whatsoever, we need a traffic light there at, at, uh, at, at, um, Corales, Corales and, and National Parks. We gotta have one there. The, I'm, I'm seeing the, the traffic in front of my office pick up so much and that's gonna become an issue soon. It's gonna, there's, we're gonna start having crashes here.
So, uh, project update, we have an engineer that's contracted us designing an intersection at Corales and I would, it's a, uh, we worked with DOT last week. We're, uh, working on that. NMDOT's supporting us, um, they're all nice, so.
Any amount of push behind it is great.
I'll tell you, the, the West Loop's great when you try and go around for all that, I mean, coming in from Artesia, it's real perfect.
Well, and with this Southeast Loop opening, is that gonna take pressure off of this road? Will that help in a way?
Which, Malaga? Probably not, um, Malaga's a little far south. Now, one thing that we did do, we just completed McDonald and Twin Wells and that might be a reason they were seeing some increased pressure here over the last couple of weeks, is we just finished chips on and we went out and put a microseal on, uh, McDonald, Twin Wells and, um, Dogtown and Huron. So, we hopefully put those alternate routes and ways around. That'll put some of the pressure off 'cause we're trying to give them alternate routes to get around. That was actually-
Yeah, maybe we could put signs, you know, and say alternate route or just something, you know?
And we tried to put that out with DOT as a, as a notice, a PSA to hear some alternate routes. Um, we'll pick that up again. That's something that we did tell Art that we do.
And, and you and I went down Holy Road and it, it, it's gonna be an alternative, but unless you do what you was talking about, block it off, people are just not gonna go that way, cause they're going back south, go back north. Yeah, I, I, just the nature of the beast, uh, they won't go down that way unless we block it off, you know, like you're talking about. But it's out of the way.
I tend to, I didn't wanna say anything earlier because I thought we'd wait till here, but with your speed bumps and all that, what you said is exactly right. I've got calls from down here where you're right, people are jumping off the road, jumping down, and so then you create a new issue for the residents. And, and that's not good either. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, uh, speed bumps are not good. I, I don't like speed bumps, I think that creates all these extra dangers. I've never seen a speed, I'm sure I've seen a speed hump, I need to think of a speed hump, maybe that's, I don't know. Rumble strips I see used quite often, but I think where replacement, how replacements have to be very strategic, 'cause when you're in town or residential, makes complete sense, you can put it out on some of these other, and it really doesn't matter where you are. I mean, now that we're two different hats, I get yelled at twice as much and ninety percent of it, honestly, is speed. Um, and it's not just a county problem, it's not just a city problem, it's a state problem. Um, it's interesting, you go, and I just read a, a whole article on Texas. Texas has the fastest speed limits in the country. I mean, it's awesome, you can, you, you're going down there, like a residential type thing going sixty-five, seventy. Um, it's interesting how the two, how there's such a, a vast difference in the two, the way they look at things. Uh, but I do, I think we have, once you get into residential areas, you have a major issue and, uh, Artesia's been saying, oh, we will not do speed bumps, but we are looking for everything we can and, and I really do, I, I've seen a lot of rumble strips in different spots, it seemed to really be the trick and, and you don't have the same issues you do. Well, speed bumps are flipping, I already got a call from one up here where it flipped and there was a bolt that might have hit a tire. You've got all these extra bonus issues you don't think about. I don't know what the issue is, but we do have to resolve it. I know it put more folks on the road, but there's also many, I mean, y'all could, the one thing I ha, I wonder is, is I know a bunch of my friends in Yola Oilfield, they're putting those trackers on their trucks to where if they do speed, they get, is that not making a huge impact? I mean, I know the welders are a trained red, I, I, every time, and I, I don't tend to go entirely super slow. Um, I'm not a terribly fast driver, but quick enough. And those welding trucks, it's not just passing like it's a jet.
It's not just industry, Commissioner.
Yeah.
It's people in pickup trucks and, and sports cars or whatever else they're driving. People in a herd and they get behind an industry truck who has one of the trackers on it that's driving a speed limit, well, that gets them all fired up because then they can't go fast enough, so they end up passing them in a, in a dangerous manner. And that's why we have fatalities.
Well, two, the, the thing that Eric never talked about, Allen Dworky, is right there in that community where there is residential. And once they get past that residential area, you know, I'm not suggesting that we put rumble strips or anything past the residential area, but you'll have, I've been out there and you have these welding trucks that's going right through that residential area and passing each other at seventy, eighty miles an hour and heck, the stop signs, quarter mile.
But to your point, when you have industry-
When you have industry that's interacting with, with residential areas like this. Um, Dorte Road is, it, it, it was a very s, it, it was a very rural, rural road for a long time. And now it is a, in the hub of oil and gas right now. Malaga in general, from Malaga to the state line is as busy as anywhere in the state. And it doesn't matter, we can put stop signs, rumble strips, speed bumps, officers. It's people, people are the problem here. It's industry, it's the, the time, the, the constant time crunch, the top, constant time push. Hurry up and get things done, um. Yeah, I, I, I completely understand, down Dorte, they, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Eas. I don't know what the answer is, but the answer is people, we have to, it, people are the problem. It's not exclusive to the oil industry, it's everybody that's out there. They have fifty-five mile an hour speed limit, running from Malaga to the state line. Fifty-five miles an hour, that's not a difference. That's the state highway. It's, it's not a difference, that should be enough to slow people down, but it's just, it's not. So, to answer the question, to find the solution, I have no idea. But it starts with the person behind the wheel and having enforcement within all the companies that are around this area with GPS, with other things.
I agree with that question.
I know that's something that we do, anytime we have a speeding alert, somebody is recommended for it, but I mean, it's a, like, like Byrne said, we are a victim of our success right now.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that, that when I first got elected, um, talking to Byrne, Eric's dad, uh, he said, hey, we've talked, we've talked to the commissioner after the commissioner has been in office and they all tell us that we couldn't do anything and then Jason and I moved some things around and so that we could get Dorte Road, hey, with those guys, as soon as I got in office. And we got it and it went from, you know, people can't drive down the road because it's too rough, potholes, to the point that now it's a real nice road and we can't slow them down.
Well, and I know it's like a silly concept, but talking about targeting like the people, you know, behind the wheel, like flashing signs like, slow down, like families live here, you know, like, stop sign coming, it's just something to just like flash, like get your attention, you know?
I'll tell you, those, those radar signs do have an impact. They can like to-
Yeah, you know, I, I know with the flashing lights, they go red, because even if it, there's not a car there, someone is, people are conditioned to see
the red and blue flashing lights and the whole crap.
Yeah, I'm speaking.
Or it sets their radar detector off or whatever.
You know, what I, what I think about every time is when I see those deals, I, I go, well, you know, are they taking a picture of me? And do they have like speed?
They are, I promise.
And I mean, those could be, I mean, really inexpensive, solar powered, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, it's, I think we should really look into things like that.
But to y'all's point, you're a hundred percent right, and I gotta pass it on because we were talking about speeding and the text I got this morning is, is someone's very upset that on compressed road, people are speeding. That has nothing to do with industry, that it's just a road. So, I'm passing it on to you, compressed road, apparently there's a problem. If I'm doing that, it's a right.
It's on the list, it's on the list.
To y'all's point, and, and what I said earlier, you're, you're right, it's a, or you're right, whoever said it's a people problem. People gotta start paying attention and, I, I mean, when you're driving fifty-five through the middle of, of Artesia on those little tiny streets, what's, what are you thinking, man? Takes you five minutes to get across the whole town going to the speed limit, where you gotta go. Yeah, it's not that, come on, and so, I don't know what the answer is, I'd love to find the answer because it, it's something's gotta happen, 'cause, 'cause yeah, these don't feel good.
Electric vehicles.
I got something for that, I'll-
We're, we're gonna keep working on it, we're gonna keep trying and putting initiatives down and, you know, we're, we're gonna keep working towards it.
I would say that I am convinced speed bumps don't work, they're both dead. You're a long way from convincing me that speed humps, speed humps will work, which is something I've mentioned se- several times about the ones around Carlsbad. I was a little confused on the de- definition, but those speed humps made out of asphalt, no bolts, extend them as far out in the right way as you can get, will slow people down and I've noticed where they are, a mission in Lourdes, there's a sign on each side of them in the bar bit that says, speed control, keep them going down. There are solutions and we are definitely, it's a problem of our own success throughout the county, I would, I would concede that.
Okay.
Thanks for talking to Rob.
Yes, thank you.
And I would say, for anybody listening, just let us know. We'll go, and, and I guarantee you, there's a lot of people who are gonna test it. We'll go out there, you just gotta let us know, but keep in mind, it is whack-a-mole. We go here, they're speeding over here. We go here, they're speeding over here. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, but we have to let us know and we'll go to them, guaranteed.
Thank y'all.
Just let us know where, we, we're, we're on Dworky all the time.
I know, we see it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so I just wanna give you a quick update. Um, the drug task force, we're, we're fast-tracking their offices. We should have our final meeting with the architect tomorrow. Uh, they think they can have plans turn around in a couple of months. They have a vendor that's, uh, ready to go onboard or is ready to mobilize and start any things then. Just wanted to give you a quick update on that and see if, stand for any questions on that.
Pushing as hard as possible, that's priority.
We are, we're, we're, we're fast-tracking this and pushing harder than anything else we have on our plate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other updates? County manager comments, I do have a few. Uh, first off, I just wanna say happy early Veterans Day, uh, it's gonna be on Friday. County offices will be closed, um, but I just wanna say thank you to everyone out there who has served, um, or who is serving, so thank you for your service. Um, I know it's a little bit early, but I wanted to put this on your radar. I know a couple of commissioners have responded that they will be going, but the legislative conference is gonna be January sixteenth through the eighteenth. Um, the reason I put that on your radar is because we do have a commission meeting scheduled for January sixteenth. Um, so, I'll be talking to you guys offline with that and possibly bringing something forward in the next commission meeting to possibly alternate those commission dates. Currently, we're probably gonna be scheduled for the January second meeting and the January sixteenth meeting, which would interfere with the legislative meeting. So, we can have options to do it the week after, the January ninth and the January twenty-third, to keep those, you know, coming in from the year and then the legislative sessions. So, I just wanted to put that on your radar. Please reach out to me if you still are willing and wanting to go to the legislative conference and we can get you set up for that. Um, the Mayor's Energy Summit, um, was back in October, um, I, I really enjoyed it, it was a different, um, different setup this year as far as panelists, we had some good panelists and good discussions, so, um, really enjoyed the Mayor's Energy Summit. Also attended the managers retreats for the first time as a new manager, that was very, very, um, informative. Um, we had some really good discussions, there were about twenty managers out of the thirty-three counties that represented, um, and a lot of the bigger counties. We had some good discussions, really the hot topics were detention centers, uh, the detention center costs, um, and compared to the capacity, the percentage of the capacity, um, we see a really high increase in detention center costs and ironically, the capacity at which a lot of the detention centers are at are under capacity. Um, so, we had some really good, um, discussions, I know that was, um, some of the legislative priorities that NMC is pushing forward on detention centers. Um, so, that will be a hot topic moving forward, um, to try to find some solutions for that. Courthouse cost, that was another hot topic, um, that was also on the legislative priority list. There's a lot of counties out there, including ours, as you know, um, not only courthouses, DA's office, um, those state mandates and housing those people, um, and the cost that it takes for that. And of course, every county is almost in the same situation with a really, really old courthouse that is deteriorating and, uh, still trying to house those additional judges on top of all that. The other one was, um, insurance costs. We talked about the state benefit pool and the deficit, as you know, um, all the counties, a hundred percent of the counties that are in the state pool are in litigation with the state. Um, they will be increasing our, um, insurance costs come January first by ten percent. Uh, so that will be something, um, that Human Resources will be notifying all of our county employees. They're gonna be having a meeting with General Services- They're gonna be having a meeting with general services departments Monday, November thirteenth up in Santa Fe. They also have a Zoom meeting. If you guys are interested, uh, let me know and I can send you that. Uh, but Roxanne and I will be attending that meeting. Um, we did budget and we have budgeted over, every single year, a five percent increase on our side on the county side. So, we as Eddie County, um, will not technically need to budget any additional expenses because that cost is covered on our side. Um, and there have been talks, Grace Phillips was at our county manager retreat and she did say there was some positive assurances that the legislature is going to fill that deficit. However, that won't solve the issue for the litigation. But in general, it's a, it's a step forward. Um, so overall, really great discussion with county manager retreat. Um, I don't wanna steal Commissioner Henry's or Carlson's thunder, but the Arrowhead study is gonna be November twenty-first. Commissioner Carlson's gonna be introducing it and Dr. Kramer's going to be, um, giving a presentation on that. Um, as far as I know, we will still have a quorum on the twenty-first, so we will still have a regular scheduled meeting on November twenty-first. Um, the other thing I wanted to put on your radar, this is also gonna be an ongoing discussion, um, for those of you that are gonna be attending the legislative conference. There's gonna be discussion on this topic. It's the National Center for Public Lands. This is, um, an organization that N A C O and the Western Interstate Region, W I R, are establishing. Um, and really what it's going to do, um, N A C O has always fought on behalf of the counties for federal funding for lands. Um, the local assistance tribal consistency fund, not each county received, any county received seven point five million dollars. That was all on behalf of N A C O, um, fighting for the counties and visiting other counties. But really, it's getting to the point where N A C O and W I R don't have that bandwidth. So they're proposing to establish, um, this National Center for Public Lands, um, to do that sort of work, research, um, provide those resources to the county. Um, one of the caveats to that is how to fund that and how to create that. So, um, N M C is asking each county to do a one-time contribution of one percent of the local assistance money that we received. However, catch that is we cannot use our local assistance consistency money. We'll have to come up with a general fund. For Eddie County, that would be roughly seventy-five thousand dollars a one-time contribution. It's very similar to, you know, um, membership dues that you pay for, to N M C. But a lot of the counties, this was a discussion at the county manager's retreat as well too, there were some unanswered questions that a lot of us still had. So, um, there's a gentleman that has given a couple of presentations. Um, we can invite him to answer some of your questions. Um, that is one of the reasons I've not brought it forth, is commissioned. Some counties have already approved it. Um, and it's not just within New Mexico, it's, um, throughout the United States. Um, they do have a goal of, I believe, fourteen or fifteen million dollars that they're trying to get to, um, for that entity. So, uh, it will be a topic of the legislative conference for the commissioners affiliate, um, and then possibly we can bring someone into, um, do a presentation on that as well too. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was the opioid money. As you know, we've received, um, several settlements from the opioid. Um, we've been in discussion with the city of Artesia, city of Carlsbad, because they're within our pool, we're housing their funds on how to best use those funds. We had, uh, sent out a request for information and are applying. Um, we did receive four, um, four responses back. However, all four of those were out of state. They were, um, from the east coast. So, um, we're still in discussion as to best to move forward with both of the cities, but I think the next step is to go out for a formal R F P, a request or proposal. To see what we get so we can start, um, awarding those funds so we can get those services provided within our communities. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is just another reminder, I've mentioned it earlier a couple of meetings ago, but vacation carryover, um, is coming close. The cutoff is November twenty-third, so please tell your elected officials and department heads, please make sure your employees are using their vacation because they can only carry over two hundred and forty hours into the new year. And that's all I have.
All right, Commissioners.
Well, uh, first I just wanna start off and, uh, thank the board for, um, approving the proclamation and supporting those practitioners. I'm sure all of you that have been to the doctor in the last year or two, you probably see it as practitioners. Um, they're very dedicated and, you know, as we saw, we have, I think, two hundred and ninety-nine, something like that, um, in state New Mexico and we desperately need more. So, uh, just wanna thank you for that. Also, I wanna thank you, Mister Rios, for coming and your neighbors for bringing your concerns. As you can see, it's something that is definitely on our radar. It's been on our radar. Um, and I do appreciate the sheriff and, um, you know, Jason's comments. We're gonna try to figure out something, you know, to help you and the other community members that are concerned about that. Um, it is election day, as Cara mentioned, and I just wanna send a special thank you for our poll workers. You know, these people don't get paid. They work the weekend. They're working late hours. I, oh, they do get paid. I'm sorry, yeah.
They're gonna be surprised.
It's just out of the kindness of their heart, you know, that people do that and I do appreciate it. And, um, you know, it's disappointing that we have, you know, so few votes, but we can continue to do our best to promote people getting out of voting still on today. Uh, welcome, you know, to our new finance director. Um, we're happy to work with you and just wanna say thanks to all the county members, everybody that works hard to make the county, uh, the county work. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Richard Henry.
Uh, I'll keep mine really short actually, um, because I think, seems like you're, you're trying to get a record here, so. I would remind everybody of this playoffs year. I know y'all didn't make the playoffs. I'm sorry to hear that. Our side, Artesia, didn't make the playoffs and, uh, I, I didn't know. I, I. I'd love to see success, I mean, I really.
It's gonna be a rematch.
So, yeah, it is, yes. So, obviously, Artesia starts their playoff run. We got a first round bye. Um, so we'll start ours this coming week against Los Alamos. So, uh, please, since, since, if y'all are free, come on down and watch the game. It will be a home game. Um, I do think, I think we've got a pretty good chance to, to get all the way and, uh, hopefully y'all will support us. We'd be glad to have you all down there. Lots of neat, successful things. Unfortunately, our soccer team didn't, didn't get it. We made the playoffs, got out last week. Um, great success in our cross-country team, a couple of district champions there that'll be moving on. Um, just really cool to see. Uh, the other thing, uh, the council had the opportunity to watch some of our F F A groups. Um, they were going to the nationals on a, uh, Rules of Robert, Robert Rules Forum.
Robert Rules.
And that group, they got to top six in the nation and so then got eliminated unfortunately, but wild, successful group. It was really terrible to run a meeting after they did their presentation. I ran the meeting down there and we are nowhere near where we're supposed to be while those young, young men and women were doing. So, uh, just, I love to see when, when, when folks are successful, when, when great things are happening. Um, so, rub them on, cheer them on, um, and, and work people for them. So, I'll just get right to it.
Richard Mo.
Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went to a stop thirty by thirty initiative, um, which is just. It was something that I was new to and, uh, it's a gross outreach of government, gross government outreach and, uh, a band rap. I encourage everybody to do a little research themselves, look into it and, uh, speak out against it. Mister Rios, thank you for showing up and for bringing this to us, um, putting it right in, right in our faces where we're forced to acknowledge it. I appreciate that. Um, again, we're a victim of our, of our success. The tax dollars from the industry, oil and gas industry is what has allowed us to fix these ruins. That have been repaired all over, that are now leaving to the speakers. So, it's a vicious circle there. And lastly, election day, fourteen hundred people have voted. That's, that's piss poor. I'm sorry, maybe I'm not supposed to say that, but it's the truth. Um, thirty-four thousand people, only fourteen hundred have voted. How's our clerk's office can handle more than that? I promise, I'm sorry. He can handle a lot more than that, so.
A lot goes into an election.
Yeah, so, let's get out and vote. It's important.
Again, I thank Mister Rios. Uh, this has been coming up round and round and round and it sounds like it's reached a breaking point. We need solutions, uh, whatever it takes, um, in favor of anything that works. But if certain things don't work, everybody knows where I stand on speed bumps. I think they're necessary and they do work, so, I'll let it go at that.
Like everybody else, I appreciate Steve and Eric coming to voice their concerns in the community. I think that, uh, that's why we have the community forum at the first of our meetings is so that we can have that. We love to hear from the citizens of Eddie County to come in and tell us their concerns and stuff so that we can address them. And if we're not aware of them, we can get them on the agenda and, 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 and address them in some manner. So, I think that's great. Uh, like Ricardo said, she sold thunder. Uh, we do have, we have been in contact with, uh, with the Arrowhead Department of New Mexico State University and they're nearing completion of our revised Arrowhead study. It's gonna have some more information in it than, than just revenue and stuff. It's gonna address some things like alternative energy and, and, and those sorts of things. So, um, next week, Jason and I are gonna go over and review that before it's presented in Santa Fe. And then we're gonna head up to Santa Fe and, and do the introductions and stuff on it so that we can get, uh, get our thoughts in along with the study. Uh, so I think that that's, that's very important. I was kinda, I was kinda thrilled the fact that, that it was, uh, Santa Fe that had contacted the Arrowhead Department to come do the presentation. So, at least, at least a lot of the legislative people are gonna get to hear it. Sometimes, you know, we take that, that Arrowhead study up there and all the, uh, legislators get a copy of it that we can give it to. Some of them don't want it, but as many as we can give it to, we do. And, um, so, uh, the more, the more we throw it out there, the more acknowledgement that we get about it. Uh, I think that it all, our, so I think that's a big difference. Other than that, I just, uh, thank everybody for being here today and appreciate all of our work and dedication and everything we do. Thank you. And we're done.
Chairman, real quick, I got in your backtrack. I was told I misspoke the vacation hours, uh, December twenty-third, not November twenty-third. Sorry. We have to tell December twenty-third to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're done.